Thank you for joining us this evening, the regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council, April 11th, 2017, at 7:00 P. M. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Jill Pumphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A core Ms. President, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight, Councilman George Glover is going to lead in the invocation, and Councilman Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we just thank you for tonight. We ask now for wisdom, guidance, and discernment as we do the will of the people of Park City. We pray for the folks of Park City, Lord, for provision where they need a job, whatever their needs may be, Lord, that they seek you in all their needs. So we just lift them up to you today, be with the council and their families here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Jim?
I move that we approve the agenda.
And Gary?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. Tonight, under awards and presentations, I have the Arbor Day proclamation, which I'll read. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2017, 2017, this 145th anniversary of the holiday and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, and cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, pure produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable, resource of giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Ray Mann, Mayor of the City of Park City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2017, as 145th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day. I would accept the motion. Gary?
Motion approved. Proclamation is read.
And Melvin?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. Nobody has signed up for public forum, so we'll move on to our staff reports, and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Woodson. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been very busy this last couple of weeks trying to get quotes for furniture for a new building. It's quite a feat because not every furniture supplier has the same type of furniture. And so trying to make as much as possible apples-to-apples has been quite a challenge. So been really working on that. Hopefully, may have something towards the end of the week, maybe have a special council meeting. It's going to take about four weeks to get the furniture possibly, and so we're kind of under the gun, so to speak. So may ask the mayor to ask you to have a special council meeting to deal with the issue. Also got another contract on Bear Hill, which is good. Basically, most of the stuff I've been working with and stuff is handled by other people here that they'll fill you in on. So unless you have any specific questions of me, I'd be more glad to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Jack?
I will say that they have flipped the traffic down at 53rd Street. So the end game is in sight. They're starting to focus a little bit on Broadway and 53rd.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Next, we'll hear from our Director of Public Works, Rick Norman. Rick?
Mr. Mayor, Public Works report for this evening, April 11th, 2017. Prior to my department comments, would like to mention that we're having our brush and limb day this coming Saturday. The west end of McLean Park, that is from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's open to all Park City residents. Good opportunity to get rid of some brushing limbs that you may have, and best of all, it's free. For the park department, we completed preparations for the April 8th disc golf tournament. Spoke with Dee Stewart, and she said that there was 90 contestants. We had completed work around the starting areas on each of those locations, and also had set up a perimeter on the backside of each of the ball diamonds to keep the traffic from the ball tournament separate from the disc golf tournament. We've also sprayed Grove Parks, applied our spraying application for weed control. We've been doing that now for three or four years. We're reducing the weed amount and hopefully increasing the stand of grass there. We've also been working on the circulars on 61st Street, got the weeds pulled. And in the area just west of our community events sign, we've cut back the native grass. In our street department, the last two weeks, we've had to clean the catch basins three times. We've also fabricated and installed a rack for our sand spreader. This is the last one. We have two of those now currently stored inside, inside of pole barn. We also have completed one rotation of mowing on our medians on 61st and hydraulic. And we have been working on the gravel roads, 57th, 58th, 65th, and 82nd. We've either added millings, road gravel, or base rock. The average work orders per day for March for the water and sewer department was 20. Be glad to answer any questions.
And I do want to point out that you had the street sweeper out multiple times.
We have.
You can definitely tell. It looks good. Does anybody else have any questions for Rick? George?
Yeah, I just want to say, Rick, on the disc golf tournament, it was a very highly successful event. Appreciate your efforts on that. Lot of positive feedback, remarks on Facebook concerning that, so I look forward to another tournament down the road, so I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just in general, the parks are looking good, especially along where we've got all the netting up for the batting cages. And I mean, it looks really sharp. There was a lot of activity in the park this last weekend. There was a lot of people out playing disc golf. It was pretty, pretty exciting to see driving by on the, on the interstate, seeing all the activity out there. Thanks, Rick, for all your preparations you and your team did to make that happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from our Senior Center Director, Melanie Schreiner. Melanie?
Madison. Sorry, Madison.
That's no problem. I'll answer to just about anything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. And I guess I'm just here to give you a little update on what's going on at the senior center. So first of all, just some numbers. Since January 1st until March 31st, the senior center has had 485 active members come through. So that means at least 485 seniors have been through the senior center at least once since January 1st. Per our contract with Cedric County, we're required to do 10 baseline or regularly occurring activities, 40 educational programs, and 15 special events. So far, through the end of March, we've completed 26 baseline, 24 educational, and six special events so far. So we're on track to meet those goals and actually exceed them by the end of the year, hopefully. Some recent highlights of those activities include, we took the senior center van to go see the Golden Girls at the Roxy Theater in Wichita and had dinner that evening, and so that was a lot of fun. We also had our AARP tax aid happening recently, and actually Thursday is the last day for that. Of course, the end of tax season is coming up. That filled up really quickly. Actually, about a month in advance, we, we filled up appointments. Last month, we went to Aeroplanes Brewery in Wichita for St. Patrick's Day, which was a lot of fun. And recently, we had a presentation on downsizing, which I think people learned a lot on. Besides that, I'd like to announce and make sure everybody knows that this Thursday, April 13th, is the 20th anniversary of the senior center. So it was dedicated on, on April 13th, 1997. So we have several fun events happening this month. First is a raffle, so for the first three weeks of April, if any senior comes into the senior center, every day they can receive a free raffle ticket during opening hours, 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, from me. And, and get a free raffle ticket to win one of five $20 gift cards that will be announced on April 21st. And also, if you bring a friend who has never visited the senior center before, you get another free ticket. So bring those people on down. Second, on Thursday at 3:00, we have a reception, so just celebrating the actual anniversary with cake and refreshments. I have a little slideshow presentation of the senior center, past and present. Hopefully, people will be interested in that. So pretty casual, but from, at 3:00 this Thursday, April 13th. And last but not least, we have a roaring twenties anniversary party, 20th anniversary party planned for April 22nd at 6:00. It is $20 per person, but there's going to be catered hors d'oeuvres and desserts and drinks. Jazz trio from Friends University is going to perform some big band music and jazz music from the twenties, and there's going to be a photo booth, lots of fun stuff. So I hope everyone is able to attend, so please contact me if you have any, any questions. And then my last kind of plug is that in May, we're having a Mother's Day afternoon tea again with a fashion show and a presentation on self-defense from Fearless and Female, or Female and Fearless, one of the two. So that, that should be fun, too. I think that's really all that I have for you today. Do I have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Madison? Tom?
I just have a question. Well, first thing, thank you for all the good things you're doing over there. It's noticed. I want to throw that out. Today, I was made aware that Federal Highways has got a funding for disabled and elderly transportation. And Wichita Transit is mentoring that project. I didn't know. Do you ever get notice of when there's funds available that you can turn in, request, and possibly have them?
Typically, when I, I would get notice of something like that when I'd have a, a meeting with the county, which I have on a quarterly basis, but I have not, I do not know about that.
Well, they've got a call for project going on for, like I said, benefiting elderly, elderly and disabled. And the deadline for projects to be turned in is May the 15th, or 17th, but I do not know what the criteria are or anything, or what the amount of funds is. And I found out, just got sideswiped today and found out about it, so I'll look into it a little bit more and let you know what it is.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I just didn't know if the county was providing information to you on regular.
Usually, they're pretty good of passing that information out, but that's one thing I have not, I've not heard of.
Does anybody else have any questions for Madison? Not seeing any. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes eight zero. That brings us to Item A under New Business, which is Consider a Resolution Determining the Advisability of Making of Certain Internal Improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, Making Certain Findings with Respect thereto, and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of Improvements in Ordnance with Such Findings. Paving Improvements, Phase Five Village Estates Edition. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have received petitions to put water, sewer, and streets and for approximately 29 lots. Here's a picture of it. It's the area in red. That's the last remaining lots in Village Estates. Mr. Clint Miller's here this evening. He's going to be the developer of it, so if you have any specific questions that you may need to ask him, he's, he's here for that. This first resolution here is for the paving. You'll have water, and you'll also have sewer on the same agenda to consider.
Okay. Tom?
I'd just like to make a comment that Mr. Miller met with homeowners association, talked to them about that several months ago. They're in favor of getting this completed back on the backside. I was part of that and got to hear what was going on, talked to him a little bit tonight. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution. I'd have made.
Okay. Does somebody want a second? John?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion, John?
No.
Okay. Jim, did you have any discussion?
I was just going to make the comment that a couple of houses ago, I, I lived in one of your houses that you built, and it was very well-built. So I'm pleased to see you're, you're interested in Park City.
George?
Does this mean there's going to be more specials over there?
Yes. So I think one thing, just to point out real quick, and we've talked about managing what we're doing in specials. And we, and we've been doing that in different developments where we're only doing 20 or less lots. So, so here, this is really kind of the last development that we have other than Bear Hill, when we start looking at doing something there. So we have an active builder that, that wants to continue going. When we look at new housing permits, we're already up three over what we had last year. And some of those, some of those areas where we've already approved to go in and do improvements, they're not, they're not completed yet, so they're not in a position where they can start building, but I think we, we've done a good job. Once again, we're not approving a block of 80 lots that we're looking at. And we all know the hardship that we lived through, through doing that, and I think we're still, you know, we, we still need to manage it, manage it well, and be careful so we don't get back in the same spot. And I think that's what we're doing here again, is we're just continuing to do small areas, filling out developments in multiple areas of town, giving people options for housing.
With that, we have a motion and a second. I'm not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Jill Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye. And that resolution passes eight zero.
That is Resolution 957-2017.
Thank you. That will bring us to Item B, which is Consider a Resolution Determining the Advisability of Making of Certain Internal Improvement in the City of Park City, Kansas, Making Certain Findings with Respect thereto, and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of Improvements in Ordnance with Such Findings for the Sanitary Sewer Improvements in Phase Five Village Estates Edition. It's really just continues to bounce off of what Jack just brought up. John?
Motion to approve Item B.
George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Jill Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight zero.
Resolution 958-2017.
Thank you, Daniella. That brings us to Item C, which is Consider a Resolution Determining the Advisability of Making of Certain Internal Improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, Making Certain Findings with Respect thereto, and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of Improvements in Ordnance with Such Findings for the Water Improvements in Phase Five Village Estates Edition. John?
Motion to approve Item C as presented.
And Tom?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Jill Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that motion pa, or that resolution passes eight zero.
Resolution 959-2017.
Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you, Mr. Miller. Thank you. Yes. So that brings us to Item D, which is Consider the Three Contracts with Mid-Kansas Engineering Consultants for the Engineering Services Associated with the Improvements to Phase Five Village Estates Edition, including paving, sanitary sewer, and water improvements at a cost of $83,738 to be funded by the future temporary note proceeds. Gary?
Motion to approve. Item D is read.
And Jim?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to Item E, which is Consider a Contract with Doot Solutions for the Mobile Work Order System, initial cost of $6,884.16 with the first renewal of $7,240 from the Utility Contracted Services Fund. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been talking for months now, trying to go paperless in, in water and sewer specifically. We looked at two firms, Doot Solutions and Sims. We went through a couple of presentations, looked at both systems. Staff believes that Doot Solutions is the better of the two. They're about equal in cost. What the system will also do, it'll take our maps that we currently have. Someone's out in the field, and they want to find a valve. It will show them on a map where to find the valve. And it will also tell them when the valve was installed, when a fire hydrant was installed or replaced. It also does a great job in doing work orders, comes out of administration. Instead of right now, we have to do blocks of work orders, just a gob of them coming at one time. And so it makes it very difficult to say, okay, you do this one, you do that one, you do this and that. So it's very complicated. And then when they send it back, it's nightmarish for administration staff also. And so this system will help do that in a better way. Also, the supervisor or myself can look on a map in, of the City of Park City, or show a map of the City of Park City, and it will color code which work orders, where each work order is at, if it's done or incomplete. We can visually see on this map if it's been done. So it also helps the supervisor to help manage his workloads and stuff. The reason it's a little cheaper this first year versus the second year is because we're already a few months into this year, and so the 60, 68, 84 takes, takes us to the end of the year, and then in January, it will be 7,240 for the next year. If there's any other specific questions, maybe I could answer them.
So some of the benefits, I think we talked about this in the past, would be like exercising the valves. We'd be able to see those on a map and be able to date when those things were done and when those activities took place. It's really going to create a one-stop shop where it's right at the fingertips for any one person to pull that up and see what's been going on. And you'll have the notes listed within there once you expand it, so it, it really is going to help streamline and cut some of the paper cost.
Also, they'll be able to look on the map and determine who owns what lot. So if they need to contact somebody, they would have that information at their fingertips.
Okay. Danielle?
I just, I wanted to show you my excitement for the software. This would benefit my staff. It's a cloud-based solution that help us, helps us manage workflow, so it would go to a mobile device. Currently, we scan a paper work order, and then, they used to be printed. We're now in a PDF stage where they open it in a tablet, but it's just paper. This is a, a system that would, it, it would all take place in this cloud-based management system, and they can open it via a tablet, and they could do preventative maintenance. They could do almost anything. And at any point in time, somebody in administration could open up a work order and see the status. So for example, if somebody gets turned off, their water gets turned off, and it's been a couple hours, and the, and the resident calls and says, hey, has my water been turned off? We can immediately know, open that work order system, click on that address, and we could tell them if that water's been turned off. Right now, we would have to call the on-call person, or it's, it's, it's more streamlined. So I just, I wanted to just make, make those, just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
And the other thing really to point out, too, is this is customizable. So things that we may need to change or things we want to do differently, they would be able to make adjustments for us or try to create different types of workflow activities that we may have that we can track. So that's another exciting thing about it, is that it can be built upon. It's not a system that they have built that we have to adapt to, that they will actually adapt to us.
Bob Walker will be able to use this system as well in, in the building department.
John?
Sounds like the recommended action is that we approve this from staff, so I'll make a motion to approve Item E.
Okay. Gary, did you want a second?
I'll second up for discussion.
Okay.
You said it's a cloud-based solution. Is it also a cellular or wireless system that's real-time?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all.
So it runs through our internet service provider? Okay.
Yeah, they will. They already have some iPads, not iPads, they're Android pads.
Right.
The cheap ones. They have them out in the field, and so the information will go to those pads.
So they're all cellular-based or something?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so one of the things Jack has been working on is, is slowly migrating to that, and we're talking about scanning documents. So they have the tablets that are, that are connected that they're using right now out in the field. All this does is it's going to allow those tablets to now connect with this and make things more streamlined than kind of our makeshift thing that we've produced.
Jim?
Actually, you just answered my question. I was curious about hidden costs and peripheral items, or, or if this was, if this covered it all, and it sounds like it does.
One thing is, we have to pay for the cellular usage. I'll have them on a plan now, and when they have to download, they either go to McDonald's and eat a hamburger and download. Go back, go back to Public Works at the end of the day and download using Wi-Fi so we don't pay a lot of cellular stuff. And so I kind of monitor that.
And really, the the last bill I looked over, the cellular usage was minute, was very minute for what they've been doing so far. Now, with the expansion we're adding and potentially doing this, it's going to cause that to go up, but they're nowhere close to their maximum.
Thanks, Jack. We have a motion and a second. I'm not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Jack, thanks for the hard work on that. Danielle, thanks for everything you've contributed to that as well.
Got some more work for you here in a few weeks. We'll talk about that later.
Okay, that brings us to Item F, which is consider a change order for the administrative center to include construction of built-in workspaces for the main reception area at a cost of seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars from the capital equipment fund. If you remember, I discussed this several weeks back, and a couple of you that I've been able to take on a tour of the new building, you've seen that workflow station, how those windows are positioned. And really, probably in the beginning of that design scheme, we should have had a built-in workstation designed there. It's going to be hard to try to find desks that are going to fit those areas perfectly. So we initially went to the builder to kind of get a cost on that, which was higher than this. And and then Jack and I worked together, and we talked to, Jack reached out to some other people. We got some other bids. And for me, I think it's important that the fit and finish goes with what we have. And I think our best result is going back with the contractor that's currently working on the project to make sure we get the right fit and finish in there, and it looks like a part of the building versus trying to get a third party now to come in there and build what we what we need. We would, while this, you know, shows a seven thousand, almost an eight thousand dollar bill, the one thing you have to look at, if we don't do anything, we're going to have to buy desk and mix match or try to get something to fit in this area. So I had asked for the council to to go ahead and approve this work order so we could go ahead and give the general contractor the thumbs up to get started on this. George?
I just had a question for Jack. Jack, on the furniture that's left behind that we still have here, what's going to happen to that?
We're going to reuse it. And we've got, we'll pass along some more junk, I mean, desks to Public Works. You know, they can kick the two-by-fours out that's holding up their desk now and use some of it. But a lot of the stuff is going to be used for like the payables office and for payroll office, which don't really have an office, and their desks are pretty bad. So we're using, re-trying to reuse a lot of the stuff in the administration end.
So that's going to cut down on our costs for the build and pay the furniture? Or do you see that or foresee that?
Well, what what I do want to point out here is, we're going to try to reuse some things.
Well, I think we should.
We want to, but we also have to remember, a lot of the furniture that we have is twenty-plus years old particle board. And when we start unscrewing stuff, taking things down and move it, the likelihood of it going back together and looking nice is not going to be good. We've done a very nice job with having our building designed, and I don't think we want to go in there and have basically milk jugs sitting on each side with a door across it with makeshift desk. So I mean, we're working on the furniture problem, but there are some pieces of furniture that we do have that are in good shape, that aren't that many years old, that can be used in in areas of the building. But I think it's going to be important that the seating and the decor looks looks nice within the building as well. Hopefully, that answers your question, George.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Anybody have any comments that's been over there and looked at the building on on doing this project? Jim?
I did get an opportunity to go walk through the building. It's it's nice. I mean, it's coming together really nicely. It's probably probably exceeded what I was hoping to see. And I, but I did see this area, and and yeah, I think this makes sense to to go ahead and build this in, and you know, I'll move my comments into a motion to approve the change order for the administrative center to include the construction of built-in workspaces for main reception area at a cost of seventy-nine hundred and ninety dollars from the capital equipment fund.
Gary, did you want a second?
I'll second and comment. I was able to go through the building as well, and judging from the outside, it's a little deceiving on the size of the building. When you get inside the building and you're able to walk around inside that building, it's a lot bigger than it appears from the street. So it's, we have a lot of areas that I know we're going to need, that will both here in the future, and I think it's going to be a really good addition to the city.
Okay, thanks. Danielle?
I just, I wanted to ask if we could make a quick adjustment. The seventy-nine ninety should be be paid out of the capital improvement fund, not the capital equipment. So if we could make a motion to change that.
Jim, would you approve that?
Yeah, I would approve that change.
I'm good. Gary?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That was the last item on the agenda this evening, and we'll move on to governing body remarks or reports, and we'll start with Jim.
I hope everybody's enjoying the few days of nice weather before it starts raining again, and and I hope everybody has a good Easter weekend coming up.
Joel?
I just wanted to make one comment, thanking Pride for their work at the Disc Golf Tournament. I know they put in a lot of time and effort to make Park City a welcoming place at that, so.
Thanks, Joel. George?
You know, I'd just like to say, I don't really have a problem against specials, but I understand it. This part of the world is unique. I know in northeastern Kansas, they don't put that on the citizen's back. They put it on the contractors, so I don't know if we'll ever change here, but I just don't think it's fair.
Thanks. Tom?
I just had a couple of things. One, and something we might want to look into is, I've benefited several times. And in their parks up there, they have an area that's probably a little bit bigger than the footprint of this building. They grow their own trees instead of buying them. It's a little nursery. And so they're doing all their park trees themselves from seedlings. And it might be something, we've got space, we may want to look at that sometime in the future. So trees are expensive. The other thing is, is they went SCAC meeting Saturday, and they were looking for areas to hold meetings next year, and I threw our name out. We can always reneg, but I don't have a date yet. It would be November or after. If nobody minds, we'll keep that out there.
No, I think that's the one, the great things about our new facility. We're going to have an area for training and hosting events in there. And I I think Park City wants to be upfront and and invite people to come and and.
That's one of the things we've kind of fell back on. Sedgwick County Association of Cities is something we ought to be attending regularly. I haven't made it to all of them, but we used to make a pretty good showing at their meetings, and we've gotten soft on it. We need to get back. So, but they've had some pretty good events. That's all I got tonight.
Thanks, Tom. Melvin?
I don't have anything.
Gary?
Don't have anything tonight?
George?
Yeah, I also want to recognize Pride committee efforts in in organizing the Disc Golf. It was a grand, it was just a big effort on their part, so I thank them for that. I also want to say happy Easter, everybody, as we get ready to celebrate the resurrection of our Lord and Savior. Thank you.
John? Okay, I'll accept a motion. John? And Jim?
I second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight zero. Thank you.